You know, that's why I always look at the clock. It's like it's gonna happen soon. I can tell. Ready to go? Okay. I call on this meeting to order. Welcome to the special meeting of the Delray Oak City Council. Could I have a rule call, please?
Preston.
Here. Here.
Here.
Here. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. All right. Next item is public comments. General public comments must deal with matters subject to the jurisdiction in the city and the council that are not on the agenda. Anyone wishing to address the city council on matters not appearing on the agenda may do so now. There'll be a time limit of no more than three minutes each for for each speaker. Public comment is open. Okay, seeing no public comment, we'll move on to new business. We have one item, the only item, and that's the preliminary budget for FY twenty five twenty six for the council's review and direction. But before I turn it over to the city manager, I just wanted to say a few things kind of to set the mood for the budget. I I will just tell you that this is a great budget. And I say that because first and foremost, it's balance. And there are a lot of jurisdictions out there that can't say that at the federal, the state level, and many of the cities that are in in on the Monterey Peninsula. So that's the first thing. Second is there's no decrease in service. So the services that our residents have become accustomed to will continue. That includes police and fire, the maintenance done throughout the city, and also the service that you get, for example, at the at the front counter here. None of that changes with this budget. It's conscientious across all the departments, and I say that to emphasize that our money is being spent well. The staff is very frugal with the money that they've been allocated, and and residents can rest assured there's no waste occurring with any of the departments. And the third thing is the accounting is clean, and that is a big step, a big accomplishment for this city. There have been problems in the past with the with the accounting, making sure that it's in the right place, and it's taken a couple of years to clean that up, and we're at that point. The other thing is it goes beyond just that. There is money available for projects that have been neglected for years, and in some cases decades, because we just didn't have the money to get to it. So now we're able to do that, and it also provides a reserve for uncertainty. And those of you that been around have been around the city for a while know that the city has in many cases flirted with bankruptcy in the past and has always struggled economically. The city has relied on sales tax increases that were part of voter measures to keep the city afloat. We also have relied heavily on the cannabis industry in the past and COVID relief money, and those types of things in the past have kept us going. In this budget, it provides a reserve for uncertainty so that if we don't have funds like that available based on scenarios in the past, we still have the money to get us through some tough times. But having said that, our revenue streams are very thin. We rely heavily on 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 three sources. Sales tax is number one, and that's concentrated around a couple of big businesses here in the city. So it's not spread out, and that makes us susceptible if any of those businesses run into trouble. Property tax is our second source, which remains relatively flat. That will continue to come in, but really there's there's no expectation for growth in that area. And just to show you how thin our revenue sources are, our third highest source of revenue is the transient occupancy tax that we get from our twenty five short term rentals. And that comes in about a quarter million dollars a year. In order to sustain or grow, we're gonna need to diversify our revenue streams, and and really, that's reliant on our ability to develop our four door property, because within the city, we're pretty much maxed out in terms of of revenue sources. I mean, I think there's a few that in the future, we can we can try to to look at initiating. But for the most part, our four door property is gonna give us that opportunity where we can really be secure economically as as we move forward. Within the city manager's report, prudence is is really the 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 mindset. I mean, it's it's a conscious conservative approach, and I think that makes a lot of sense. And to put in the words of the city manager within his report, it's an austere budget. So I just wanted to kind of give you my thoughts on it before we get into not only the operating budget, but also talk about some of the projects that are there. So with that, I'll send it over to the city manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Technology and share my screen here. Is the growing pains of updating technology. Do you work? All right. Well, let's go to the next slide and see.
All right. Ladies and gentlemen, I present to you the city manager.
I don't know what I'm managing. Barely managing. All right. Well, welcome, everybody. Thank you for coming. Today will be somewhat of a high level review of the budget, but also get into the weeds on some of the details of the budget. You've heard the biggest part of the budget last month when we presented the operating budget, the five million dollars. So this tonight, we'll go over that. More of a history lesson, building off what the mayor said. And then we'll talk about fund balances and capital projects, get input on on that side of it. Beyond what we already received for the operating budget. So just a brief overview, so like the mayor talked about, economic pressures are are something that we really keep track of here in the city. You see, the second one there is limited revenue streams. So our our revenue streams are so tight that they are heavily impacted by any kind of downturn in the economy, any kind of economic pressures. And, you know, I'm sure everybody here has been watching the news. The economy is really uncertain right now. Just generally speaking, for our our area, as long as interest rates remain high, eventually that's going to impact people's spending. And our biggest source of income other than the police services contract with the airport is sales tax. And so if people start to constrain their spending, especially if they start spending a little differently at the supermarket or a little differently going out to restaurants, that's gonna significantly impact our primary revenue stream, which is sales tax. So and then tariffs and other things that are going on at the national level are not helping with the local economy. So the HDO is our auditing firm that also tracks sales track, sales tax trends statewide. They were cautiously optimistic for statewide trends and trending about two percent up from this year to next year statewide. Unfortunately, for us and for Delray Oaks, they're actually trending for our sales tax revenues to go down a little bit. So so that's reflected in this budget. Fortunately, we've actually had upturns in some of our other revenue streams. Now, there's there's significantly smaller revenue streams than sales tax, but they are having a positive effect, and they are keep they're making up the difference in what we're losing in sales tax. So I'll get into that as we go on. Another thing to consider is that over the last few years, we've had a pandemic bump in our in our revenues in two ways. We got pandemic recovery funds from the federal government at the start of the pandemic, and that's why we've been able to do things like update the city hall that you're sitting in right now and looking at. We've been able to do some capital projects, and we have some money still sitting in our fund balance reserve for capital projects like fixing the parking. Thing, but it's still moderate growth. It's it's been very slow incremental growth, and we're not really actually keeping up with with CPI. So this budget is a one point seven percent increase from previous year to next year, which is is very small. So like the mayor said, it's better than other cities, some other cities, some other cities don't do as they're not as small as we are, and they're not able to keep their spending down the way that we're able to keep our spending down. So a one, even though their budgets are growing, one point seven percent does not match their cost of living increases for all of their staff and everything. So they're technically falling behind because of the way we budget and the limited staff that we have, and because as we're on second dollar store, and we track every penny that we spend, we're able to continue to move forward at such a moderate growth. And then, as I said, we'll talk about fund balances and capital projects later. Next slide, please. So just looking back over the last five years, six years, this is basically what you see is the bottom line is the pandemic starting. That's our twenty twenty one operating funds, general fund actuals. You can see that we were significantly impacted that year from the pandemic, and our revenues were about a million dollars off from what we normally expect. But then, when you look at the trend line after that, we you can see in twenty 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 one, twenty two, that's where you see kind of that pandemic bump, where we came out and people were spending a lot at restaurants and spending a lot at the grocery store. And then twenty two, twenty three, retracted a little bit, came back, and now we're going kind of back up. It's up and down, up and down. But it's really pretty straight, very gradual increase in our in our operating budget. And our operating budget, so Roberto would tell you if you were here, we basically budget, we build our budget around what we anticipate to come in in that fiscal year. So we're for lack of a better term, we're living paycheck to paycheck. So we're budgeting to exactly what we anticipate our revenues to be. Those are very tight margins, and that's very difficult to manage, too. We've been doing a really good job, but it's tenuous. And so if there is an economic downturn, we don't have a lot of flexibility, and we don't have a buffer to fix that quickly. So that's why we're always staying on top of the budget. That's why when you guys come to me with additional requests for services and things, I always know we're doing what we can. We're actually doing a little bit of bump above what we can. But so far, we're doing great. We come in. Every year, we come in a little bit under budget, and so every year we add to the general fund fund balance. At the end of the fiscal year, based on what we've what we've anticipated to come in and what we've anticipated to spend, we usually come in about fifty thousand dollars under budget, which again is a very narrow margin. So it's tough. It's tough to manage that. Like so, next slide. So this is so this this line is a little hard to read, but so basically, these are our top revenue producing producers. And you see, there's really two, and that's sales tax and property tax. Sales tax is the big one, the light blue, well, moderate blue, I guess there's a lighter blue one. But what I wanted to show you on this one is is you see, sales tax had that big bump right as we came out of the pandemic. Property taxes have remained fairly steady. They've gone up a little bit as homes have started to sell after the pandemic. That's why you start to see our property taxes start to creep up, but it's incremental, and it's not really enough to grow our operating budget. But what you start to see in this is after property taxes and sales taxes, we were we were relying pretty heavily on cannabis tax and on business license taxes. That's the kind of rust colored one in the paint is the business license taxes and T O T and interest on our investments were negligible at best. And then, and as we came out of the pandemic, we spent some money in twenty twenty one because revenues were impacted, so we had to spend spend some money. So we didn't have idle funds to invest in twenty twenty one, twenty two necessarily, and interest rates were still low. So that's where you see we were our our interest earned was sixteen thousand dollars that year. So you can barely see the line on there, the green line. Cannabis tax, you can see, started going down. In the next year, cannabis tax started going down, and cannabis taxes stayed in that twenty two, twenty three period to now has stayed consistent. It's about a hundred thousand dollars a year. Now, that's down from almost a million dollars in the first year when we had cannabis, when we had especially first open. So that's a significant drop off in our what once once one of our primary revenue streams. But in that year, too, in twenty three, twenty two, twenty three, twenty four, twenty twenty three, twenty four, that's where you start to see a shift. So T O T is starting to come up. People are starting to travel more. We've actually had a number of applicants for short term rentals, and we're at our cap of twenty five, right? So we've reached our maximum short term rentals. But you can see, short term rentals, just behind business license fees in twenty two, twenty three, or twenty three, twenty four, became our fourth biggest revenue stream, and that was at about a hundred and forty thousand dollars. So keep in mind, a hundred and forty thousand dollars is our fourth biggest revenue stream. That's not a lot. So and then you start to see the change even more where T O T is coming up. T O T is maxing, is matching business license taxes now. Business licenses went up a little bit, and they're kind of trending up right now even more. And I'm not sure what that is. I can guess that as I know a couple of federal employees who have been laid off, who are now starting home businesses, and so I know not here, but in their city, they've applied for business taxes. I don't know if that's translating here. But for whatever reason, we are getting some new businesses, and so that's helping with our business taxes. But the big thing, the the big one, which we'll talk about later, and what the potential ramifications of spending fund balance are, is that green line there is quickly becoming our fourth getting close to becoming our fourth business revenue stream. And that's interest that we are earning currently on idle funds that we have sitting in the bank. We moved those funds over to an investment, which is called Local Agency Investment Fund, LEITH. And right now, because we're invested in the bond market and interest rates are really high, we're earning four point, last time I checked, four point three five percent on our interest. So this year, we're trending right around two hundred thousand dollars in revenue from that interest, and we're anticipating two hundred, I think it's two hundred and twenty five thousand for next next slide. This looks bigger on my computer than the best. This is just an overview of the operating funds, the operating budget by department. We did that last last month in greater detail. The key takeaway here is you you see, if you can reach it, that revenues and you'll be able to see it clear on the next slide, but revenues are five million seventy four thousand two hundred and expenditure thirty. So we have a balanced budget, and like I said, we we've been really good at managing year over year and coming in just shy of that and haven't been under budget yet. Not that it can't happen, because like I said, fifty thousand dollars is a very narrow margin, but we're we're really tired on budgeting. So next slide. But this is the breakdown of departments, budget by departments, and this is important to look at when you think about services that your your city provides to your community and where historically and currently the priorities of the community have been. So you can look at the the chart on the the left side, but on the right, I broke it down to basically public safety, which is our police department and fire and I think I loved animal services in my T T. But so public safety services are sixty three percent of our overall budget. And so that was thirty seven percent of our overall budget for everything else that we do in the city. So every other service, parks, public works, administration, all of those are done with less than forty percent of the budget. So it's just a good visual as a community, when you're thinking about what services you expect and what want from your from your local city government, it has to match with what the available resources are and what the funding is. And so if we change that priority and change that perspective, then we have to change budgeting to match the new priority. So but historically, unless I'm wrong, you guys tell me if I'm wrong, but as far as I know, I've been here for thirty years, and historically, the priority of this community has been public safety, which is why, as the mayor said, overwhelmingly, you all voted to self assess when there was a threat of your police department not being fully funded and going away. So so this budget as far as we all know, does represent the priorities and the and the interest community. So that's the operating budget, just a little soapbox speech on how tough it is to manage this budget and what the pressures are that we're dealing with. I, you know, if you guys wanted to spend three hours, I could go line by line and tell you everything that keeps me up at night, but I don't know. I think you guys. But I don't know, I think you guys want to do that. But we do want you to sleep well. Yeah, no. Uh, budgets, yeah. So. So this is, this is the tou- this is the tough part. This is where the rubber meets the road. These, this, this is a very small listing of what we'd like to do in this budget and some of these things we've already done. Um, but these are critical things, uh, especially, uh, in, in this region. So, um, we have minimum staffing requirements for public safety and for the police. So there, there have to be a certain number of people on at any given time. You can't just have one officer anymore like we did back in the nineteen fifty. So the city was new, um, because it's not safe, it's not safe for the officers. They need backup and so, um, as, and we have requirements for the airport contract and how we staff for that. Um, so we've always held a pretty hard line on what the staffing is for the police department for the last, I don't know, five years, chief, we've kept a, a position unfunded. Um, that was primarily because as we were going into the um, as we were, well, we didn't know we were going into the pandemic, but at the time that we were going into the pandemic, budgets were still really tight, cannabis revenues were starting to drop off. And like I said, cannabis was the bridge that kept the city solid and kept the city from being on the verge of bankruptcy and having to self-assess, keep the police department. The cannabis revenues were, that's, that's what got us through that, that tough period. And in twenty nineteen, that was already starting to drop off. And so when Dino was here, city manager, he saw that dropping off. And so with the previous chief, even with the contract with the airport services, it was still tenuous being able to keep our police department and keep the other services going. So, uh, we held the, the, the funding for the staffing at what would be bare minimum for staffing levels. And then backfill as much as we could with reserve officers. Uh, at the time, chief, we had a pretty good bank of reserve officers. There were a lot of younger guys who had been officers and had gone off and done other things in their careers, but wanted to dip their toes back into being officers. Um, and so we were able to bridge the staffing needs with some really good quality reserve officers. Some of, some of the reserve officers who were retired have now fully retired. It's, it, you know, as you get older, it gets harder. Hey, it's driving, sitting in a car all day is, you know, I can't do it. It's rough on my back and and so we've lost several, the younger guys have moved on in their careers and they don't have the time. Um, so in this budget already, we've already included the funding for that additional officer. Uh, primarily because we were starting to already have overtime pressures with backfilling for that officer and that, that unfunded position. But also we have one of our officers who's on, who's a, a marine, who's a reserve officer. And he gets deployed fairly regularly. And he's currently on a deployment already that won't end until the end of December, right, chief? Right? So now we have two positions that we're backfilling for. And so the overtime is starting to get to the point where it's, it's, it's far outpacing what it would cost to fill that one position. So the chief and I talked about it. Now recruitment is going to be the other tough part. And if you're all here next month, next month, we'll have a hearing where the chief will go over our one vacancy. It's a new rule. We have to talk about our vacancies before we can adopt the budget. Okay, one vacancy, what's now officially won't be a vacancy because, but he'll have to talk about how, how he's going to recruit and fill that position. Um, so, but that's already included in the budget. Um, the chief also, and I also talked about, so there's a, a salary range for reserve officers. And currently we're paying them the bottom of the range, which is thirty five dollars an hour. So I have to ask the chief to bump that up. So we're going to start that on July first with the new budget. That additional funding that's included in the budget as it already is to bump that up to forty three dollars an hour. Um, that's to make it more appealing for, uh, retired officers to come back. Because there is a liability risk for them, health-wise, but other, you know, other ways too, for them to come back and, and get it back involved in an operation that, you know, is potentially hazardous and, and things can happen. So, you know, the, the, the extra money will help us be able to recruit reserve officers and we really rely heavily on them, much more so than other agencies. So the last thing that we haven't included would be a five percent cola for the staff. For everyone except for me and the chief. And, uh, so we're Delray Oaks is always lagged far behind all of the other agencies in our region. Um, at, at last Friday, we had our city managers luncheon and I took a poll of all the city managers there. And almost all of them are giving, uh, salary increases this year and they're multiple year salary increases. Uh, so a lot of them are either three, three percent, three percent, three percent, or four percent, four percent, five, four percent. So, um, even with this, we're still falling behind. And at some point, right now, chief, Karen, commander, Ron, everybody, we've all done a really great job of providing other opportunities and other incentives for our staff to want to stay here and work here. It's a beautiful community. It's a safe community, especially speaking just for our public safety officers. Um, you know, it, it, they get to do things that they wouldn't do in other jurisdictions. So you come in as a rookie officer, pretty soon you're doing investigative work and solving crimes. It could take you a decade in your career at any other larger jurisdiction before you even get an opportunity to apply to do that in your career. So there are incentives, uh, it's a great work environment. We have a wonderful staff here. We have a wonderful supportive community. So there are a lot of incentives. But if we don't do something to try to keep up and at least keep the gap in funding and sta- and salary uh, within reason, uh, we will start to lose staff to other jurisdictions because a lot of our staff are young, they're starting families and you know, eventually they gotta start thinking about the pocketbook and especially, you know, five percent, that doesn't even keep up with inflation when you're going to the grocery store. So, um, and you see, so forty three thousand dollars, that's what it would cost the city of Delray Oaks to provide a five percent cola for the staff. It's really sixty nine thousand dollars, but half of the PD is paid for by the airport. So it deducted that out. So it's forty three thousand dollars. Like I said, we're, we're razor tight margins, but I, I hate to make promises, but I will do everything within my power to make sure that we're, we're tracking the budget and and that we can accommodate that increase. It's that important. And if we have to, we'll tighten our belt in other areas. So, so I'm recommending that we put that in there. It's not currently included. It'd be easy to include it. And, and I think it's important. I, I, I think we're at the point where we can't afford to keep falling back. All right, next slide please. Okay, so that's my pitch on general fund. And operating fund, we talked about it last month. Uh, no questions. Uh, we can stop now. If there's any questions and maybe ask.
Yeah, absolutely. Let's do that. Uh, I'll start with the council first and with the vice mayor, uh, Halleck, if you have any questions or comments.
Thank you, mayor. No questions or comments at this time.
Okay, council member Shirley.
Uh, I don't have any questions. I support provisions to the budget. So, um, I appreciate you looking at the staff.
Council member Berger.
Uh, my, my question is directed at John. On the reserve officers, uh, how do they affect our retirement budget? In other words, do they receive pensions?
They do, they're, they're already retired. So if they've retired from a, an agency, they're already drawing their retirement and that. So we don't provide any benefits for them other than salary.
Thank you.
Okay. Council member Uwe.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Mr. City Manager for the briefing. And, uh, I just have like a couple of question, if I may, uh, when I was reading the staff report and, and I know we're really like heavily reliant on the sales tax. And then, and we have a, uh, a three percent projection that would, it will drop. And, uh, what scenarios have staff has modeled, uh, if ever this three percent would even go deeper? You know, so, uh, are there any contingency plans that we can probably prepare? So that if we see that in mid-year, next year, at least we have, we have something to, to do now.
Yeah. So initially, and, and I'll talk about this more as we, as we move forward, but we have the economic uncertainty reserve, which is one point six billion. And so that, that'll buy us the time to, uh, figure out what the reality of whatever the situation is that we're dealing with and then how we have to refer to address that, modify the budget.
Okay, okay then. Yeah, thank you. I thi- I think that's all for me.
Okay, thank you. I'll take it out to the public. Are there any questions or comments from the public?
Good evening. My name is Ahmad Amadi, uh, and my wife and I, Anne, we live in, uh, ten fi- at ten fifty five Fort Lauderdale. And we've been here like, uh, four years now, I think. This is further out. Anyway. Um, I would like to make a short comment about the need for a community center. And the, the way I am going to state that is not going to affect the budget as such. Um, if you know, like the other neighboring cities, they have community centers. Uh, uh, Seaside has got two, uh, we have none. And, uh, you know, I believe that the city of Delray Oaks, if they can donate, donate a property to be used for a community center. We can organize a, um, committee to get the funding from the other agencies, from federal governments, from donations, and that can be used, this community center can be used for a lot of events. Such as I know the bridge event, uh, the chess event, bridge events, and even for the city. I think the last time that we had a meeting in the city, we had to rent lodge, if I remember rightly. That was a year and a half ago, that we went at the lodge that you presented the, for that project. So if, uh, you know, there is property available within closed vicinity. I think there are some properties maybe around the, uh, Hana, Hana Gardens, maybe that can be used. You know, I, I know there is property the, that we are planning to get, you know, in future development, but I think that's not going to happen in my lifetime. Uh, so if you can possibly think of donating a piece of property that we can, and I talked to Jeremy about it, so we can organize, get a committee ourselves, myself and there are bridge committee groups. Um, we have some money at the moment ourselves in the, the Bridge Club. Both Bridge Club and Bridge Foundation, we have, uh, decent amount of money. So we can possibly build something. I know we have the, uh, and the time is running out. The city hall, the old city hall, that can be used, but the problem with the old city hall is either, both is, is too small and accessibility is not easy. You know, especially for people getting up that ramp and all that kind of thing. And I've got twenty eight more seconds, but that was my comment and I hope we can donate a piece of property with water. That's all I ask and it's not going to affect our budget.
Thank you, Ahmed. Good evening, mayor, uh, council, uh, Gary Krieger, I'll just jump in, I guess now. I'm not sure what else is coming, but I did have a couple. First, like, thanks for everything you've done to staff. I've, my last job in the Navy was running the, uh, Super Crew Peter program over at Fleet in America, about seventeen million dollar project. They were always coming after our money. It was always a scramble. So I appreciate having flashbacks, actually PTSD from all that. We were flashing all that up there because that's what I did for my last three years uh, in the Navy. But specific and general comments, uh, specific, I'd like to circle back around or encourage us to circle back around at some point. Think about that vacancy tax. Again, it's not new, people, other people had done it. Stone Creek Kitchen's been vacant for four years now. I, I haven't driven through all the Delray Gardens recently. I don't know if there's, I know from time to time there's vacancies. Buildings that I've seen just laying vacant in there. We should encourage those people to get, you know, something in there. And Stone Creek Village especially, the kitchen is, was a great business. And anyway, I know there's a lot that goes into that, but it might be worth looking at. That might be another source because we're, you know, that might bring some more money in. And then on a, a more general, I would just like to encourage as we go forward and, and trying to get more resident involvement, uh, into, you know, resurrect our strategic planning process at the finance committee meetings, get more citizens involved. There are a lot of smart people in the city, business people, other people and you know, my, my undergrad was chemistry, my master's computer science. I've been teaching middle school math for seventeen years. I still, I still, almost every year have students surprise me with some new, something new and I go, oh dang, that's a pretty good idea. I never thought of that. Well, you know, and so there's, there's great ideas out there and they come from all sorts of places. So we, you, we work so hard, you're working so hard, but you know, there's a lot of smart people out there in the city that we might be able to get some, um, some help from. So I would encourage us to look and be proactive in trying to get more people, uh, involved in that. Okay? Um, and I, the last thing I, you won't, on that is if things turn south and we have to start making those hard decisions again, if you've got citizen resident buy-in, they're going to be a little more understanding than just showing up at the doors going, hey, what the heck is going on and why, you know? If they've been involved in the process, they're going to be a little more, um, they'll understand more what's going on. And you'll have less explaining to do about, you know, stuff that probably isn't your fault, right? It just, things are going to happen, but they'll understand why they're happening if they're a part of the process as opposed to just showing up going, why am I not getting this or that anymore? So I would encourage us to be proactive and try to make that happen. And lastly, I'd like to thank the staff for giving us their parking spaces. I was pleasantly surprised to pull in and see empty spots that was not at all expected. So thank you guys very much.
All right. Thank you, Gary. Okay, any other public comments? Okay, I'll close public comment for now, but there'll be another opportunity where I'll, I'll come back to you. Um, the, the thing that I would like to add, uh, to what council member surely had to say, I, I also support funding that, that position, uh, in the top, uh, the salary uh, increase and the five percent cola. And I, I get a sense that from the rest of the council members, that's kind of a, a consensus on that. Okay, so that gives you some direction there. Okay.
These are really good growing pains, by the way. This, this is improvement. Um, okay, so, so for fund balance. So a little, little walkthrough the last five, six years. So the first time really that the city had fund balance, that they could actually plan and come up with a policy for, for what to do with, uh, was several years ago, like I said, in twenty sixteen, twenty seventeen, when the cannabis dispensary went in and was fully operational. And it was, for the first few years, it was kind of a windfall for the city. And so at the time, the direction for what to do with that new balance of money that was sitting in the bank from the city council, uh, was a very good one, in my opinion. As a budget nerd, was the right decision. They put it in what's called the economic uncertainty reserve. So it was really probably the first time in decades, if not ever, that this city actually had a reserve for downturns in the economy. And so that's very prudent. Uh, it's actually about a requirement, but it's, it's definitely best practices from the government accounting standards board that you want to have a reserve and you want to have a certain percentage of your operating budget held in reserve. So, how, so we have, we have that reserve fully funded. Um, how did we get to the one point six million? I have no idea. Um, normally, uh, for cities, especially for bigger cities, it's typically fifteen to twenty five percent of your operating budget is what you budget in a reserve. I would tell you that doesn't make sense for us. We're so small. A small downturn in the economy could have devastating effects to our budget. So this one point six million is just shy of four months of operating revenue, of operating funds. So four months isn't a lot of time to adjust to, uh, to an economic downturn. And like I said, you saw the, the revenue streams, one downturn in the economy affects our one biggest revenue stream significantly. And so that revenue stream isn't one point six million, but it's getting closer. that revenue stream isn't one point six million, but it's getting closer to that, but so a way to think about, so how did they get to the one point six? My guess would be that's how much was available from the cannabis revenues, and so they just said, put that in, and that's reserved. So, um, which actually, if you think about it now, I can rationalize it now in a way that makes perfect sense. One point six million dollars is about the revenue that we get for, from the airport for our police services. So the way that contract works is if the airport decides that they wanna go another direction and they wanna get out of that contract, they have to give us one year's notice. So that gives us one year to adjust. This gives us two years to, because this would basically fully fund our police department for another year. Uh, not that that would necessarily be what I would recommend we do with that, but just to make it easy and help understand why that reserve makes sense and why that number makes sense. It's basically offsets the contract with police services. So it would give us plenty of time to address that. Um, and it, it more than makes up for any kind of economic downturn that would impact our sales tax, because well, I was gonna say, sales tax isn't gonna drop off where it doesn't exist anymore, but if Safeway were to decide that this community doesn't work for them, that site doesn't work for them, and they decide on a whim to move, then yeah, not the entire one point six million, but a lot of it goes away, goes, it walks out the door with them and getting another uh chain store to move into that side, I don't know what the viability of that is, so. So that number's good. It it'll help with a lot of different contingencies. And back to your question, uh, Councilmember Uwe, that's, that's the money that helps us bridge any gap and give us time to come up with options and solutions to how are we gonna go forward and how long are we gonna have to make adjustments? So, uh, then, so that council, they put that in reserve, and then anything else that came in, we were still budgeting beyond what our expected revenues were at the time, so with that new revenue source for cannabis, then the direction was that any additional funds left over after the economic uncertainty was funded would be used, if necessary, to help bridge gaps in operating costs for the next fiscal year. So, uh, then as revenues continued to get a little bit better, even though cannabis started going down, it was still better than we, we had the economic uncertainty and the revenues were coming in better than what we were spending, so we were having fund balance at the end of the year. So then, the direction from the council was to start funding our future liabilities, so our, our our pension liabilities in the future. Um, the actuaries will come up with formulas on what are your potential liabilities in the future if somebody retires, how much you're gonna pay out for that retiree. And so the section one fifteen uh pension pre-funding trust, that's a way for us to put money aside and start earning mon- interest on that money and have that money ready to pay for retirement benefits. So the, the plan was to get that up to about one point two million, and every year, if the money's available, start putting in a hundred fifty thousand dollars. We did that the first year, and then the pandemic hit, so we went for through a few years, just being conservative of not funding that and keeping the money in fund balance. So this year, we put in three hundred thousand dollars to start catching up again. In the current recommended budget, we're recommending that we get back on the one hundred fifty thousand dollar train. And so it won't get us to our goal yet, but we're making progress to get into our goal. Uh, so then, after I got here, we got pandemic relief money, so ARPA money, recovery funds to help us get, get out of the pandemic, and that was an opportunity for this community. You know, other communities got a lot of money and ha- you know, they did a lot of different things with it. They paid salaries, they, they paid salaries to waitstaff that had been laid off, they built, you know, did new programs, big capital projects, things like that. For us, we focused on capital projects and using that money for capital projects, because we had decades and decades of delayed infrastructure improvements and repairs and maintenance that needed to be addressed before they became catastrophic failures. So that's what we use that for. And then last year, the council also directed that we should be planning for our vehicle replacement specifically for the police department, because a police cruiser is very expensive to buy and then outfit. Ballpark around a hundred thousand dollars now. I think our last one was seventy-five, eighty thousand, and every year it goes up, so. Um, all of that equipment that goes on a police cruiser is very expensive and time consuming. I think from the time we order to the time we take possession is around seven months, right? So we have to plan in advance, and uh, you know, seventy-five to a hundred thousand dollars is a big ask for us to figure out in a budget year if we haven't planned for it in advance. So that's why we did the vehicle replacement uh reserve. We put forty-five thousand in last current fiscal year's budget, and then we've recommended forty-five thousand dollars again in this fiscal year's budget. Uh, that gets us all the way to another vehicle. How often do we replace vehicles? About one every eighty-three years, maybe?
Yeah, me too. Do you know, we need to replace probably every other year. Three years, but we have one or two.
So, and then technology, we can like I said, our, our budget's tight, so uh, it's just prudent to put a couple few thousand dollars a year into a technology replacement fund. All of our computers are getting old. This one's our, this was new when I got here, it's already four years old now. Uh, you know, lifespan of an average computer is around five years these days. We're keeping them more like seven, eight years. Uh, but, um, I mean, even the ones that we got for you guys are already three years old.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, um, like I said, we're really good at keeping things running and using things for the full extent of their life, so we're not frivolous, we're not gonna spend a lot of money unnecessarily, but it's good to have a reserve, so. That's, that's the current direction from the council on how to utilize fund balance, and so that's what we've done. Uh, if there's other ideas, we're all ears. Um, so next slide, please. So there's been discussion going around every time Roberto presents the numbers, it gets a little confusing, because he's, he's an accountant, and he uses accounting terms. And not everybody understands, and he and I have gone back on that case, he uses he uses accounting terms in a way that confuse everybody, so he, he keeps listening, so right now, at the end of the current, at the end of the last fiscal year, and what was available for the current fiscal year was this three million two hundred seventy-one thousand three hundred thirty-one dollars. Uh, he keeps showing that as unassigned, so unassigned to people means that it's available, right? Let's not. So we're gonna change how we report that so that it's clear to everybody, so that anybody looking at the budget understands where the money is, so. Uh, and then what really is available. So if you look at it, the, the first one point six million of that three point two million is in the economic, economic uncertainty reserve. That is assigned. That's actually committed using the accounting language. So we're gonna change how we, how we report that, because ob- obviously you see that already almost cuts, well, does cut the number in half already on what's, what's potentially available. Uh, now we're putting an additional three hundred thousand into the uh section one fifteen trust that I mentioned. Forty-five thousand went into, this is the current fiscal year. Forty-five thousand went into vehicle replacement and three thousand into technology. And then, in what we accomplished this fiscal year and what was budgeted, so this to make it easier for everybody to understand, I, instead of breaking it down into what was budgeted this fiscal year, I wanted to focus for everybody on what we actually are getting done this fiscal year, because we budgeted considerably more, but unfortunately, we don't have five Ron. We had five Ron, we could get a million more things done, but have one Ron, so we only get a lot done. And so, uh, but we got a lot more than this done. This is just what came out of that general fund, fund balance, and these are the capital projects, some of which you see right here, uh, and so that was another thirty-five thousand dollars. So already, that knocks us down to one point two million dollars in the, the unassigned fund balance. Uh, next slide, please. Yeah, so then, building this year, the, the next year's budget.
Back, so back.
Yeah, so, so now you so now you see the one point two million is what we're estimating will be the fund balance at the end of this current fiscal year, so at the end of next month. Um, it'll probably be a little bit higher, because marginally, because I, I, I think our interest earned is going to be a little bit higher than what we currently have budgeted, so that'll fall into that in November-ish, we'll have the audited numbers, and so then we'll know exactly how much was in, and then we can come back mid-year and modify the budget. Um, but, so you see, I took the Economic Uncertainty Reserve out of there, and I'm not showing you that now, because as I said, that's committed, so that's not part of this one point two million. But for the policy, put another hundred and fifty thousand dollars into the section one fifteen, forty-five thousand vehicle replacement, and three thousand technology replacement. So, and then these are the capital projects. As I mentioned, several of these were budgeted in the current fiscal year, but I'm showing them for next fiscal year. The accountants hate that, because in their mind, it's not in this, in next fiscal year, it's in this fiscal year, it's carryover. That's where they confuse everybody. So we're just gonna talk about the way that I understand it. Hopefully, that's the way you guys will understand it then, so that it, it's easier for everybody to see where the money's going and when it's going. So, uh, we'll get, I'll get into this a little bit more, but City Hall Parking Lot. So you all saw, we, we did Rosita Road, and that was an emergency project, and that was fortunately, we were going to do that, that was seven hundred thousand, if all said and done, seven hundred thousand dollars that that was a project that had to happen before we lost Rosita Road. And we were in danger of losing at least half of that roadway. Uh, so you see, that would have almost wiped out our, our fund balance just for that one project. That's how small our funding sources are, and public works projects are incredibly expensive, especially emergency months. But fortunately, the chief, fighting with the federal government over and over and over and over again to try to get FEMA money, uh, wore the FEMA folks down so much that they finally went on our behalf to the Federal Highway Administration and got us funding from the Federal Higher Highway Administration. So that was mostly funded, we paid eighty-five thousand dollars, I think, out of our budget, and all the rest of it came out of federal funding. Yeah.
Yeah.
Sorry, I should say the Assistant City Manager, because the next guy, he was the Assistant City Manager. He wears many hats, just like the rest of us. So the parking lot is the next one, that's kind of the same. You know, we're probably not at risk of the whole parking lot sliding down into the park, but it's gradually sliding down into the park, and every time it rains, uh, it, it's tough for Ron to keep up with plugging the holes. And so he's like the little Dutch boy. And so, so that was on the schedule for the current fiscal year, but there's too much going on, so that, that is our primary capital project scheduled for next fiscal year. You see, we already have one hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars budgeted for that project. The, what you see up there is the fence replacement and the sewer upgrades, that'll be part of the same project. Because once we do the, in order to do the parking lot upgrades, we'll have to take the fence out that's currently there and pieces of the old fence that aren't there anymore, but the poles are still there, and put in a nicer fence, something that looks nicer, prevents people from just running off the side of the hill into the park. But it looks nice, like a split rail fence or something like that, that's not the kind of hurricane fencing that we have now. Um, but the sewer upgrade, we threw that in, because uh, we found out the hard way several years ago that City Hall's still on septic, and the septic is out behind the police department here underneath pavement. So if the septic ever goes wrong, something goes wrong with the septic system and it needs to be repaired, we have to dig up the whole parking lot back there in order to just get to the septic system. And it doesn't make any sense, because right down the hill in the park is the main sewer line for the city. And so we talked to Seaside County Sanitation, I think forty thousand dollars was the estimate to get rid of the septic system and put plum, uh, uh, line down to that main line, so. And then we don't ever have to worry about it again. So now, in the next slide, you'll see a hundred sixty-seven thousand is woefully inadequate to actually do what needs to be done for the parking lot. So, I'll, I'll talk about that later. So this is what's currently budgeted in projects for this year. Some of these things are probably overfunded in this proposed budget. Um, so we'll, we'll go in and take a look and come back and modify this for the, for the next one year. It's not a lot of money, but you can see, City Hall Chamber renovation. Ron got a lot of this done out of his own budget, and really his own time. Uh, and so this money didn't get spent down the way that we expected to, because uh, Ron is good at, at figuring out how to get things done cheaper, but also because he's been pulled away for so many major projects. He hasn't had time for some of the maintenance projects, so he had money in his maintenance budget, so we used that from this fiscal year. So this money, the fifty thousand especially for chamber renovations. Um, there are still things that would be nice to do in here, like upgrade those seats out there, so that they're a little more functional and more comfortable for you all, but also they're more functional to be moved around and stacked and get out of the way, so we can use this space for other uh, other things that we do at City Hall, meetings and things like that, uh, with the setup tables. Um, but also this dais, this is the original dais from the nineteen fifties. And most of us, not all of us, Kim, Kim loves it. It's perfect size for Kim, but I actually bruise knees every night when we sit here. Right, right. Right, uh, so, um, it would be nice to get a new dais. Those are nice to have, this is part of the discussion that we need to have going forward. I, do we, is this a want or a need? That will be a discussion with you all and with the community on what do you wanna do? I think City Hall already looks great. It would be more functional. We are going to do new carpeting, especially in the, in the PD, because they're messy and their carpet isn't really bad shape. And they need, they, they walk around a lot, they've got heavy, heavy sold twos, and they tear stuff up, so we need something that works better for them. And if we're gonna do that, we, we're gonna do administration too, so if we're doing new carpeting, we should do new carpeting everywhere. And if we're doing new carpeting in here, at the very least, we should update this dais as well and make it more functional. This little stage area here just cuts off space that's now unusable. So those are things that Ron and I'll be working on and then come back to you all with. But so this is just currently what's already budgeted. Most of this was already budgeted in the current fiscal year, and as I said, it's a carryover. So it's not really part of the next fiscal year's budget, but it's available to be used. Um, but, so that was a long-winded tangent. Really what I want you to focus on is that after everything that's already been currently approved for spending with the fund balance, from that three point two million, seven hundred twenty-five is what we're down to already. With, once you take out everything that's already been committed for projects and, and uh, and reserve funds, so next slide. So this is what I was talking about with the parking lot, so I think Ron and I are gonna have to work with Sherman, our city engineer, and get our thinking caps on and probably come back to the council with options. And probably what we'll do is we'll do a bid that goes out that kind of sections off the project into different options. And so they do what are called additive alternatives. So we'll do the main project, which is the back corner, which is the failing part of it, and what is it gonna take to get that shored up and get that fixed? And if that's all we can do, then that's what we do, because that's the critical part of the project. And then we start building out to all of the other parts of the parking lot that, that need to be upgraded and need to be fixed. Because once we touch anything, so when we touch that corner to fix the repair, at the very least, what we have to do is that then you've all seen that parking lot, it has a crown in the middle. But the problem with that is, is that as soon as we touch the parking lot, under the ADA, we're required to construct a current up-to-code uh, uh, accessible, accessible parking space. And um, we can't do that in the current slope of the parking lot. The, the current existing spot and the previous attempts of doing spots, none of them were up to code. Um, the one that we have out there is closed-ish, but not early. So, so at the very least, we have to do the shoring up, fixing the repair of the, the failing part of the parking lot and provide the ADA accessible parking space, and so um, that's gonna be a big project. That's gonna be expensive, and a hundred and sixty thousand dollars is likely not going to be. And so, um, that's gonna be a big project, that's gonna be expensive and a hundred and sixty thousand dollars is likely not going to be sufficient. Uh, to do most of what Ron would like to do out there, not everything, we would probably need another three hundred thousand. If we were to do the entire parking lot over again. And address all of the deficiencies that Ron and Sherman have identified, we're looking at probably a million total for that project. Which, yeah, which is maybe a bridge too far.
Yeah. Construction on that corner. Move that water.
Yeah, so, so we're gonna, we're gonna come up with Sherman's help and we've already, we've already consulted with a, a geologist. Geologic engineer, tell us what we need to do in order to shore up that corner so that it doesn't happen again. Um, which isn't too bad, I was expecting them to tell us that we were in big trouble, but actually it was pretty positive about it. Um, but, yeah, so we'll get as much done, we'll, we'll provide you with alternatives and then we'll go out and bid and see what that's gonna cost. Uh, but that's, that's currently unfunded, those needs. And same thing, so to the community center issue that you brought up, that's the number two on here. So we have a lot of potential opportunity in the, in the city, we have an underutilized public works yard down here. Which is soon to be adjacent to a wonderful new trail that goes through our city. There's potential opportunity down there. Uh, as you mentioned, we have the Garden Center, uh, which is also adjacent to our new trail and soon to be new pickleball courts and tennis courts. Um, and Work Memorial Park, in my opinion, is an underutilized asset in the city. So there's opportunity down there. Um, and then for those of you who've been up Rosita on the, on the south side. At south, yeah, south side or west side, west side, southwest side of Rosita, uh, right at the crest of the hill there. There's a whole couple of acres of property there that used to be dense Amazon-like vegetation. But is now open and has potential, there's that, and then if there's a bridge over the creek. There's opportunity for trails or something on the other side and then maybe down all the way into, uh. Work Memorial proper down behind the Garden Center, so those are all opportunities. Um, but those are things that need to be done thoughtfully, there's a lot of. Options out there for what can be done and how it can be done. Um, so I'm recommending that we put some money aside to hire a consultant to help us with that. Um, because a, as I mentioned earlier, our, our revenue streams are very narrow and until we have additional rev- revenue streams. Uh, additional services aren't really, uh, possible in this community. And so Ron is only one person and any new asset that you add to your collection. Any new trails, any new parks, any new community centers, anything like that. Um, requires maintenance and that requires staff and it requires funding, not to mention just the, the. The money that has to go into creating those new assets, so, you know. Parks don't build themselves, trails don't build themselves, community centers don't build themselves, all that requires. Funding to do that, and you can see our funding is already running low with, uh, with our. Fund balance in our reserves, so, uh. There's a lot of opportunity, it's very exciting for the community, but, um, whatever does. Whatever we follow on whatever the community wants, whatever the options are, it, it needs to be done thoughtfully and it needs to. Have a plan that's sustainable so that we don't inadvertently. Impact your city's ability to function going forward and remain distinctly sustainable. Um, housing, so housing element, hopefully within the next sixty days, we're gonna have a certified housing element. Uh, we have committed to a lot of programs in that housing element and those programs all require funding to implement. Uh, so, uh, conservatively. Just for what we've committed to get done in the next fiscal year. Uh, I think we're gonna need at least fifty thousand dollars in consulting help to get that done, because we don't. We just don't have the in-staff, in-house staff to, to do everything that we've committed to do, doing. Um, several people have mentioned, it's been on Ron's checklist for a few years now. But if you walk, I know, everybody's walking on it now, so I'm hearing about it more often now because. Can't get across here, so everybody's crossing at work and then going down into the park to get over here. And those stairs at Adair are not terrible, but they're not great, uh, I wouldn't run my hand down the rail if I were you. Um, but they're kind of wobbly, they're old and they need to be upgraded. Um, Ron has, I wouldn't put this in there if he hadn't told me that he thinks he could get this done next fiscal year, but. We're conservatively fifteen thousand dollars to get that. Get that project done. Um, and then this one, park bathroom water efficiency. That's one that was pre-approved, well, it was approved and then we moved the money out of it, but it's still out there, it's a good project. Uh, to make our facilities more water efficient. It's not necessary, so, uh, and it's not likely that Ron can get to it next fiscal year, but. I put it in there just so that you know that it's still out there and it's. A, a project that you all approved in consent, uh, but. We're certainly open to talking about whether or not it's something that you all still want to do at this time and maybe push it off for a little bit later project. Um, and then we, we actually made a commitment to the community when we took the measure to increase the T O T by two percent. Uh, that we would utilize some of those funds to, the additional funds to purchase a short-term rental management service. So we got the estimate for that. Uh, we have a company that we think is the best to go with, uh, called Avenue. Uh, the startup price for that, so it's fifteen thousand dollars a year. In theory, the services that they provide. Not just in extra staff time, because now staff don't have to do the work, but also in them. Finding tax revenues that maybe aren't being completely paid or, or whatever, you know, um. They should be able to make up that fifteen thousand for us and it should pay for itself. Uh, but the initial startup is the first year of fifteen thousand dollars and then there's a twenty five hundred dollar setup fee. With them, so I put that as a budget. Request for the next fiscal year to utilize the fund balance for that, and then like I said. On going after that, it's a three-year contract. So the next two years, we're on the hook for, like I said, theoretically, it should pay for itself. We will be tracking it to make sure that it does and we'll be reporting to you all, to the planning commission. On how that's working, um, and then at the end of three years, if it's not working for us and it doesn't make sense, then we won't do it anymore. So just with that, just with those limited capital projects, that gets our unassigned fund balance at the end of next fiscal year. It, it won't be this exactly, but this is for illustrative purposes, will be two hundred and twenty eight thousand dollars. You see how quickly, and we're not gonna build this back up. When it's gone, it's gone. We don't have the revenue streams to build fund balance. So when we build fund balance, we're building fund balance by tens of thousands, not by hundreds of thousands. So once we spend this money, for a long time, it's gone. So next slide please. Um, and there's still a lot of future need out there, this is just, this is not an all inclusive list that I put in here. These are just some things off the top of my head that still need to be done. Some of these will go out and look for grants for, but grant funding requires matching, matching funds. And when we're down to two hundred thousand dollars, even at ten percent. Uh, matching, ten to fifteen percent matching, that's a very small project that we can even qualify for grant funding for, so. Not having capital reserves. Not only inhibits our ability to address. Uh, emergency capital projects as they come up, it also inhibits our ability to go out and find other funding opportunities. To deal with long-term known needs like South Boundary Road and. Fixing the tot playground and Old Town Hall repairs and things like that, things that we probably could get, you know, Prop sixty eight funding or something like that, but. There's a ten percent. Match requirement on that, yeah, so, so just something to be thinking about as we're spending down the fund balance that, you know, we. There's more implications to that that I'll get into in a second, but one of the implications is, is that we, we hamper our ability to be agile and address emergent. Capital needs as they come up and with every storm, there's a threat of something. Happening to our infrastructure that we don't have the funding available to address if we don't have reserves. So, all right, next slide. Is that the last slide? That's the last slide. So I actually did another slide and I forgot to include, it's so big. Basically, uh, it was just going back to, uh, show you. Over the five years, what we've earned in, in, in interest on. Investing our idle cash, and so like I said, in, in twenty twenty, twenty twenty one. I think it was around forty thousand dollars in interest and revenue. Uh, and then in twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two, sixteen thousand dollars. Uh, and then we started actually, well, we got recovery funding, so we had. A significant amount of money in the bank, we had the one point six million dollars in our economic uncertainty reserve. And so we had real money to invest and money makes money. Uh, so when we have real money to invest and then interest rates started going up. Our return on that investment, when I first got here, we were making about one percent on our investment, now we're making, like I said, almost five percent. Five percent is significant when you're investing two million dollars. And so, uh, we've gone from sixteen thousand dollars four years ago to now we're estimating two hundred and twenty five thousand dollars in investment revenue. Uh, but if we spend that money and we spend it down, we don't have that money to invest, which means we have to come back in mid-year and we'll modify our estimate on what our. Income is and which then also means we have to modify our spend, because as I said, our spending is currently. Back directly with our expected revenue, there is no buffer. So if we expect a downturn in revenue, then we have to match that with cuts in services. So, um, now that being said. You know, I'm not trying to scare everybody and I'm not trying to dissuade anybody from, from recommending projects or spending the money on projects. That's why the money's there, people pay taxes for us to provide services, so. Yeah, i- it's become an important revenue stream for us. But it's also important that we provide services and we keep, upkeep our capital needs and all that, so I'm not advocating for. Wording our money and keeping it for, uh, reserved for interest. Uh, and for investment, um, but it is an impact, just, and I just want to make clear that everybody's understanding that as we go forward and make decisions that there aren't. Intended and unintended consequences to decisions that we make, and so we need to go on eyes wide open. Uh, and, you know, the. My recommendation for you all, just for you to chew on, is that right now we are kind of making unprecedented. Interest returns on our investment. And so my inclination is to continue investing as much as we can while we're making those returns. At some point, that's gonna go the other direction and then spend the money. Also, we only have Ron, and there's only so much Ron can do in a day, and there has been maintenance stuff. We, we whacking and mowing and stuff like that, that he struggled to keep up with because he's been managing so many giant public works projects. On top of man- managing Tamsi and their project, that he's being pulled in ninety different directions, and so. The next fiscal year, if he just focuses on the one big project and maintenance. You know, he would be happier and, uh, our, I would be happier because our pocketbook would be happier, so. Uh, but it's up to you guys, we'll, we'll do whatever is the will of the council and we will move forward, um, but just. Be cognizant of, of what our fifth biggest revenue stream is now, because I track it every day. And with that, questions?
Yeah, along with the reality of the bandwidth that Ron can take, there's also the reality of how much the residents can take. I mean, you, with all the projects that we have going on in the city. Uh, it's like I've said before, living through a giant home remodel and after a while, it's like, okay, I've had enough, I want my kitchen back, so. Um, there's also that reality. Um, okay, so, uh, I'll start with the council first, if there are any questions or comments, and Vice Mayor Halleck.
Thank you, Mayor, uh, no questions, uh, a couple of comments, uh, that, uh. I support all of the, uh, proposed use of, uh, fund balances, I think those are well prioritized in the best interest of the city. Uh, as well as, uh, encourage and support to pursuing, uh. Going out for bid for, uh, the identified additional needs. Um. Regarding the potential unmet needs, those are always fun, the unforeseen's. Uh, I think that one that should be considered, perhaps not this upcoming fiscal year, but inevitably will be a, uh, consideration. Is that, uh, we have this big beautiful recreation path, uh, going through our city. And, uh, that path was, uh, loosely deemed as, uh, serving the public general. And my concerns are accessibility, uh, from one point versus another, uh, it's much easier from some of the flatter areas by topography and proximity. Uh, in some of the, the, the flatter, closer areas. Uh, than it is per se, the bottom of Portola or the top of Rosita for, uh. Uh, multimodal access as it was proposed, uh, children on bikes, people with mobility issues, walkers or wheelchair-bound. Individuals, and so eventually we're gonna have to look at, uh, and the Adair stairs come up, uh, to that point, you know, we have this. Path that served the city well, that kind of bisects our city and connects both sides of the canyon. And there have been, uh, substantial repairs, great repairs over time. But still remaining are the two, uh, stairways on, uh. The, from Villa Verde down to the park, which are a bit substandard code-wise and not really creating, um. You know, clear and safe, uh, accessibility for, for all of the aforementioned, which will involve. Very large engineering projects, switchback, uh, low-grade ramp systems. Uh, the stairwell on, uh, Adair, I don't know if it would be prudent to get out ahead of that and when we're performing such repairs, I know it's a tight area and there's not. Much room to do so now, but just something to put on our radar, I think, you know, in the category of, uh, potential unmet needs, because I do believe they will arise and we should. Cater to the needs of, uh, of the community, you know, city inefficient way, so. Thank you.
Okay, Councilmember Shirley.
Thank you. Councilmember Halleck, I like that, I, I, that had not been on my radar, but I like. That now I'm remembering that people had mentioned that before, that it's really hard from Villa Verde to get down. Uh, to the park, um, and so working on stairways, having, you know, something that's a little bit more accessible, some switchbacks, I, I like that idea. Thank you for bringing that up. Um, I, I am in support of, um, certainly the big projects, um, City Hall Parking Lot, I, you know, I'm thinking about just sort of. Health and safety for all of us, um, so City Hall Parking Lot, sewer upgrade, fence, all that. Um, you had on here P D radio replacement, so is it ten thousand this year and then ten thousand next year?
So. Just three thousand dollars now.
Radios are very expensive, um, ten thousand dollars per radio. We recently got six, it was, uh, probably two years ago and it was sixty seven thousand dollars and it's. It's one of those, that's a lot of money at one time, what if we could have a savings account and set aside a little bit every year? So that when the time does come, we will have a pot to do this, so that was my attempt and the city manager's attempt. To set aside money for when we need new radios, we don't now. But in, you know, five years, ten years from now, we will. And so, uh, I'm not gonna spend, uh, unless something drastic happens, any money on radios anytime soon. It's just a savings account for us.
Okay, good, that's good, thank you for explaining that, it would be great if at some point we can move to a place where we just have all those reserves listed. And we know how much is in it, that would be super clear, so thank you for clarifying that. Um, yeah, I'm in support of the Adair Stairway Repair. Um, I'm also, I, I've brought this up before in the finance meetings, but like. The signage around our city, I feel like really needs to be, there's some work and people have made comments to me. We have signs that are leaning, we have, uh, stop signs that are too short, other signs that are too short, um, we have signs that are just unreadable. Um, and I, you know, I just, I just feel like we can replace those, and I know Ron's time is limited. And I understand that, and so I'm also in support of trying to get Ron a little bit of help if we could on some of these projects. Um, I know that, yeah, the city is, uh, having a hard time with all of this, you know. Um, I know that, yeah, the city is uh having a hard time with all of this, you know, renovation that we're doing with the trail. Um but I think having having nicer signs, I mean, there's some speed limit signs you can't even read um that are falling apart. So I think. If we are able to do that, I'd like to see that done. Um, also, I'm getting, I'm hearing um people on Rosita talk about speeding. You know, we have uh the sort of metered, you know, s- uh speed signs on Portola and one on Quindale in front of the Krieger's House. Um I I do think, I I imagine they work. Um so I'm wondering if we'd wanna put something like that over on Rosita. Certainly coming down the hill on Rosita. I've had a complaint there about people speeding on that part. You have one?
Yes. Well, yeah, so we have one as people come.
Oh, oh, uh, yeah, yeah, yeah. But I I mean, up, up, the upper, upper Rosita. Yeah. Um.
Yeah, so we can do.
So I'd be interested in 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 that sort of thing. Um. I'm in support of the um planning consultant and also with the uh STR Management Services and obviously. Doing what we can to implement our housing element. Um. I I would love to see do trash cans in the park. So um. You know, however we can do that, I I think that would be uh important. Um and then as we, you know, in terms of also but kind of back to signage, um. And maybe, I don't know if we wanna wait until four tags done, but just like no smoking signs in the park. Um I think there's some other signage that we might wanna put along the four tag trail. Um. And then, let's see. Um. I know that we don't have a capital reserve right now, right? We don't set money aside for capital. Projects. And so I think that's something that this council should think about. Um it sounds like the city manager is wanting us to not spend all of the money that we have in our general fund balance, which. You know, I I I, you know, I I want things done. That's our residents' money. And we should be using that. But I also feel that we should have the discussion of of. You know, how much do we wanna put aside for capital projects? Because um we are getting good interest on it. And we know in the future, you know, every capital project is gonna be really expensive. So if we have some funds, I think that would be great. Um, I know we also talked about the Verdi curb and gutter repair, but that's maybe in the future, right?
Uh, yeah.
Where are we at with that?
This year, next year, haven't we? Is it on that? Oh, yeah. So, y- yeah, so there are projects. Because I didn't wanna get too into the weeds with you all and confuse everybody and drag this on for hours. There's a lot of other pockets of money. There's SP one, there's gas tax, there's measure X. And so Via Verdi, I believe, is one of our SP one funded projects.
Okay, so that would be fully funded through that fund.
At the time we estimated, it was.
Okay.
On it, we'll see.
Okay.
When this current prices, how much.
Yeah.
Get done, yeah. Originally, we were talking about doing a sidewalk and curb and gutter, and now we're probably looking at just curb and gutter.
Yeah, okay. Um, in terms of kind of back to City Hall, um. You know, a new carpet for police. I'm I'm on board and I know it's kind of a situation like if you give a mouse a cookie, right? You sort of end up by doing all these other things. Um, if we wanna throw this in there, as I I do think our meeting should be Zoom capable of people to call in. And make comments. And so whether that's our technology that needs to be updated. Um with our wifi, being able to handle that capacity, I feel like we need to, it would be great if we can move to that. Ability for people to call in and actually provide comments in our city council meetings. Um, in this, we haven't talked at all about donations that we would make as a city to uh nonprofits. I don't know where that falls into the budget. So.
Yeah, yeah, we could, we could do that again. Um generally, we've just been, the last three years, we've just followed the. The direction from three years ago and just funded at the same level. But yeah, if you wanna bring new or different. Yeah, we can, we'll, I'll highlight that for the next, next month before we.
Okay, yeah, that'd be great. Um and then I've brought it up before, I I don't know if this is absolutely necessary, maybe I should get the chief's thought on this. But our city does not have an emergency operation plan. Um and I don't know how important that is. It certainly seems like something that's important. So um. That's, I I feel like I'm the only one who ever brings it up. So uh I'm sort of curious on people's thoughts on on that.
It's something that uh we would definitely need fire and help. To to complete something like that. It's a big project. But I do have some ideas um that maybe uh. Would help us get there, uh breaking the bank. Uh so I'll I'll uh, I'll work on that.
Great, thank you. Um, all right, I I think, I think that's it for me right now. I'm, you know, I'm. I wanna say I'm happy that we're having this meeting. Um I think it's pretty rare that we all, as I, I mean, as a council. Get to like really get into the weeds on this. Um I wish we had more public here. I think, I know budget is not very interesting. But it is more interesting when you start to talk about all the different projects. Again, you know, we have to be careful with our spending. I understand that, but um. I think people, it gives them a little perspective about where we're at with things. And so. Um, you know, thank you for having this meeting because I, I appreciate our ability to have this discussion.
Okay, Councilmember Berger.
I, I appreciate all the work that went into this. Um, obviously, it's it's a monumental task. Um, I think, I think the residents here in Delray Oaks um. Have a really good quality of life, really good quality of living that the city secures. Um, I feel right now that the residents would fully support security by saving money than. Um, looking to spend it. Obviously, the proposed projects that are in the budget right now, I think are necessary. Uh, they they need to happen and I like the idea of doing it frugally as Ron and staff have always done. So I, I think the budget is a really well-rounded budget and unfortunately, it is a shoestring. So thank you for all the work.
All right, Councilmember Uli.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And uh thank you, uh John, for that very uh like good presentation. Because once and for all, I saw some charts in this, in this budget discussion because. There's always been tables and a lot of those uh line items and it's very hard to read those. But I really appreciate the charts and the uh bar graph there. It's way easier to to see and to read. And thank you. And and also thank you for uh really like uh for the thoughtfulness and the restraint. Uh that went into developing a realistic plan uh for next year. So uh especially that uh we're anticipating that we might have a challenging economic environment. Okay, and but I'm praying that uh we won't really like have that, you know, big extent of uh difficulty in in the near future. So uh but I I want to highlight a few key observations and provide input for consideration for our final budget. Uh proposal. So but first, uh I support uh the conservative approach of uh. Of our uh proposal, given the three percent drop in sales tax revenue. Uh particularly because sales tax is one of our biggest chunk of revenue. And uh. Uh and as you have mentioned earlier, this really just reinforces that we are very vulnerable. Uh to economic fluctuations. Uh because we're a small city, we have a very uh small budget and also our revenue sources are very limited. So uh so that's why uh I agree that we need to diversify our revenue base. Uh I am also encouraged by the increase in the T O T. Uh and thanks to our voters uh who really approve the the two percent increase. And uh and of course, the higher uh short-term rental occupancy right now that we're having and. And we're seeing that it's really like even the third highest revenue source for our city. And uh I can see that it's a sign that our residents really is. Uh really like thinking for some uh sustainable revenue for our city. And and I don't know if we can uh really provide the momentum uh. Or we can build the momentum based on the T O T because uh I know I fully support that we need to have. Uh we need to develop Fort Ward. Uh but of course, uh we can see the fruits of that in the next few years. And uh I'm thinking of what else can we do in the near future, even within this year or in the. Uh in next year, what we can do as a council in order to boost up our revenue. Uh, uh, I I don't know if T O T could be an answer, uh because it seems like it's very lucrative right now. So uh and then um our city clerk mentioned that we, there's already like, we have already reached a cap. Uh I don't know if the community would be eager to maybe raise the cap for that. And uh I don't know, I'm just like throwing these uh ideas again with the intent of how to boost our revenue. In in the short term, because right now, we all agree that uh our our hope for economic development is in the Fort Ward. But then we also know that that will not happen in the next two or three or four, four, four or five years. So but in the meantime, what can we do as a city to boost our revenue? So so that's what I'm uh think thinking. And then, of course, we can't really just rely on temporary fixes. Uh or cuts year after year because that's not sustainable. Um managing expenses is important, but. Uh but it's not a long-term solution. And we have to really like be strategic. In uh in thinking like how we can boost our revenue. And uh I fully support the staff's uh suggestion that we begin planning for really like the strategic planning for the Fort Ward. Uh and uh because I know in my mind, looking at our budget for the last three years that I've been in the city council. Uh economic development is really, should should be our top priority here in Del- in Delray Oaks. Uh because uh i- it's just like saddening to see how small our revenues and our budget. And then I feel like we're in the, you know, uh in the very poor city. You know, compared to the other cities uh near uh near in or in our neighboring areas here. Uh, uh, okay, and and also I I want to also to speak uh to the residents uh who shared. Concerns about their everyday experience living here in Delray Oaks. Uh I know uh one issue that was shared by Councilmember Shirley. Uh and then that would also come up with my conversations with with our residents and with our neighbors and even. Uh there was even a recent uh like letter that was sent to the whole council. About uh some of the fear that they have when they are walking their dogs. Or exercising in our streets. And then uh uh because they feel that there's a lot of speeding vehicles. Especially along Portola or Quindale right now because of our construction here uh a- along uh. Uh near City Hall. So that's why we, so all cars are going in that way. And then um and uh. And 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 they feel that they're no longer really safe in walking in in our streets. So that's why I'm thinking. Uh maybe I agree with uh Councilmember Shirley about some traffic calming uh measures. If we can put a a little few of the uh radar uh like speed signals or signs. Uh that would be nice. Uh because uh I know that uh it's effective. When when we see our speed being shown on those radar speed signs, we tend to slow down. You know, so but if there are really like none like those to remind us, uh it's really very hard to really monitor our speed. And we're driving. So uh and and I like all of the capital projects that the city has really like. Provided for our next uh budget. And then I I just, my only wish is to have that uh some road safety measures that we can. So but at least we can provide to our residents that uh feeling of security when they're outside. On our, on our streets. So I know that we have to be fiscally disciplined. But I also want to be responsive to the needs of our residents in here. So so that's all, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, what I'd like to do is take it out to the public at this point. So if there are any. Public comments or questions that you have, please feel free to come on up.
Any other comments over there? And that is really to do with John. Communities centers are money generating. That is one of the things we need to realize that at this moment, I am a board member of our Bridge Club. And is a board member of uh Bridge Foundation. We pay fifty thousand dollars a year to rent the place that we are using at the moment. That could come to the city. And Aldermeyer, we try to rent Aldermeyer is very expensive for our events. We try to rent uh Portuguese Hall. For a weekend, three thousand dollars. So these money can come back to us. So just to say that if you give us the land. We make the community center and generate money. Thank you.
Thank you, Ahmed.
All right, Gary, just go a quick thing. Uh and I was talking to the mayor about this, the CAG meeting, but. I'll make a picture of the sign, that yield sign on the little triangle there, Portola and Quindale is. We see the beak to beaks all the time. Well, I do because that's in front of my house. And I see the beak to beaks pretty frequently and people coming down uh Portola. They just don't expect that they got the yield and they just blow right through it. And that sign there faded and small and and uh so it'd be nice to. I don't know, that maybe is an easy one, just get a big, nice, shiny yield sign and stick it up there, at least make it clear that. You're, we'll see if they yield, but at least, you know, maybe it will work. And the the signs do work, you're right, people, because again, it's in front of my house, so. Most people slow down when they see it, not all of them. Um and we have seen an uptick, although it seems like Mayor and I were talking, it seems to. Maybe had petered out a little bit, maybe people got tired of cutting through and found other ways to shortcuts, but. Uh definitely was an uptick in traffic and, you know, a lot, I see a lot more red numbers up there than I used to. But hopefully uh that I get under control. And the last thing I would say, I would just make a comment on the. A D U, we, there was, there was a lot of conversation, planning commission about the the number. And I would uh. I would suspect that you'd get an airful more conversation if you tried to add additional A D Us. What I would hope though is that over time, all right, we got some nice A D Us in the city. And the word's getting out, because I, we know, we have one across the street and there's one next to my mother-in-law and and we talk to the people and. We got a lot of repeat people starting to come back and the words getting out. We guess it's a great location. People like the location, Monterey doesn't have any, so they they like our location. And we have some nice ones. So hopefully what we'll see is people will start being repeat customers and coming back, telling their friends. And the ones we have will stay busier because that would, that might be the way to grow that hopefully, you know, I mean, no- nothing we can control per se, but. Hopefully that will uh, that'll help continue that the, that stream to grow a little bit over time and. Less competition, maybe they'll raise the rates a little bit, we'll see. But anyway, thank you.
All right, thank you, Gary.
Thank you, Council. Anna Mahdi, two comments and one question. One comment first, as an old hospital administrator, having to do budgets every year, I feel your pain. Uh and appreciate the conservative approach uh to a budget. Um second comment, having just reviewed our report on fire risk. Um I see that there's a significant part of Delray Oaks, which is in high risk. For fire and and an additional amount at moderate risk. So I would like to uh talk about uh Kim's suggestion of working with the fire department and others. Around assisting with some emergency management plan for. around assisting with some emergency management plan for either fire or earthquake. Um, but also some education for our community on what they can do to minimize the risk of fire in our area. So that was just a second comment off of Kim's. And then the third is my question, and I'm hearing all these great ideas about what we could do with even that small amount of money that we're talking about. But I don't understand what the process is in deciding amongst all of these really good ideas. What would be the best ideas for the limited money and how we come about those decisions? So that's my question. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Ann. Um, any other public comments? Okay, um, I'll bring it back and, and I'll just say how lucky we are to have a self-proclaimed budget geek in charge of our budget. I mean, just the amount of detail and conscientious effort that you've taken, I really appreciate it, John. And I know it took a long time, it's not the most exciting thing, but to lay it out that the way that you did. Folks can understand it and you get a really good idea of what our financial picture is. And the approach that we're taking, like Ann said and, and Councilmember Uli had mentioned, that conservative approach I think is the right way to go. Because in a lot of ways, we owe it to our residents that we won't repeat the past. I mean, there have been decades where we've been living on the edge by a shoestring. Um, and it, it's, it's not a good place to be. And you can see how it's been laid out that we're in pretty good shape. And I think the approach we're taking is prudent and I think it's on track. Um, regarding the projects, I also agree that the projects that my fellow council members had mentioned, I, I support that. Um, one of the things that uh, I think is really important and Ahmed touched on it as well, is finding out how we can utilize our, our space here in the city. And, and we might find those opportunities for a community center. And we're very limited on how we can expand our revenue sources. But we might also find as a planner gets out there that we might have um, a, a, an opportunity, whether it's down by the garden center or down uh, at the maintenance yard, where we can add a revenue stream um, to our portfolio. So that's why I think that's very important and, and I think it's a, a great idea that we, we get somebody on track, a consultant to, to, to take a look at that. I have also heard concerns from resident, residents about speed. Uh, Councilmember Uli and, and, and Councilmember Shirley had mentioned that. Um, I, I would support expanding it beyond just a couple of places that were mentioned. Uh, the chief and I, well, the reason being, it's, it's twofold. It's a deterrent, like John said, when you see it flashing, folks seem to slow down a little bit, they're more conscientious of it. But another great reason for it is those speed signs collect data. And Chief has been downloading those to get a good assessment on what the traffic speed is in certain areas of the city. And what we're finding, because speed is very much a suggest, a suggest, subjective call. The objective data shows overall, uh, the, the cars that are traveling uh, through the streets that have those speed signs are staying in accordance with the speed uh, that's posted. Um, there is three to five percent that exceed the speed limit, um, and I think you're always going to have that. But it allows the police to get an assessment of different areas to see if maybe we got to implement additional measures. So I, I would support even expanding uh, the use of, of those signs for those, those very two uh, important reasons. And then the last thing I'll say is with the remaining money that we have, uh, the quarter million, um, I think those projects listed are, are also good ones. Um, the one thing that we don't, well, John, you had put it in there that we also have to, to, to consider unplanned or emergency repairs. So we've got to have some money available for that. The other thing too is, and Councilmember Halleck, he, he can confirm this, things cost more. When, when you're in construction and you've got a project, you know, we, we look at maybe the Adair project, the stairway. Or we look at the park bathrooms. Uh, what we have there is most likely going to cost more, we've seen that. And you know, a, a person that's in construction can confirm that. So a lot of those projects, we probably won't be able to get to just because of that. Or if we have an emergency that comes up that we have to uh, address. So those are my thoughts on it. And I think uh, for the most part, uh, you've got some, some pretty good guidance on, on uh, you know, where you need to go with it. Uh, one last thing, Ann, to answer your question, in terms of how do we determine then this, these projects? If we do have money left over and say, okay, based on all the, of the, the other factors, we're capable of maybe taking one of those on? We discussed that during the finance meeting. And it's, it's kind of a moving target, because the city manager gives us a status of where the budget is. And he can tell us, yeah, okay, based on this, we have maybe this amount left over. Um, and it might be different than what we see here. Um, but we do discuss those projects in there. And if we do have leeway, um, public's invited to attend and, and you can advocate for some of those projects that are in that uh, area of, of uh, potential funding, that quarter of a million dollars that, that's there. Um, so I'd encourage you, if you have a project that's either on there you want to advocate for, or there's something new, to attend the, the finance and, and, and let it be known. So, yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, so a couple of comments, uh, additions and have some questions of my own now. Or maybe not questions, but just shape some direction. So just add into what the sheriff, sheriff. I used to work for the sheriff. And don't, don't get a big head.
What are you talking about? Your chin?
I pointed it to you.
Am I deftly tied, you know? Okay.
So just to clarify, by the way, sorry, to clarify, um, I said budget nerd, I didn't say budget geek.
Oh, okay.
I don't know if there's a difference, but um, so to your question, Ann, uh, before I came and historically, like I said, budgets were tight and so there wasn't really capital planning in the city ever historically. Um, and you know, I, I, I grew up in Public Works, that's where I got my start in government. And, and capital improvement program is a key part of that and you plan for five years out. You plan for much farther, but you, you present to the governing body in the community every five years on what you find your plan is. And so that's what we've moved towards, kind of. It's more fluid here, because we just have Ron and we have limited resources. Um, and so we've been having those discussions every year as part of the budget development. And, and with Ron, like, like, Sheriff again.
Don't make me arrest you.
As, as the mayor mentioned, uh, uh, we've been doing it at the finance committee first and then bringing it to the council. And, and then we have these discussions every year at the council. I get into the weeds like this every year at the council when we do the budget. And uh, um, I didn't present the five-year plan this year. Uh, because last year that seemed to confuse people, because the accountants presented in a different way. They presented according to budget and, and it starts to move numbers around and it confuses people. So this year I just wanted to focus on very clearly walking everybody through what the fund balance is and what that is available to be used for, because that's been the focus of questions and comments and, and a little bit of angst uh, because of how it's presented. But we also have the Public Works Committee, which hasn't met ever, but we will start a meeting, it's a new committee. Uh, it was actually created by ordinance in the fifties, but that was back when the council or the staff to the city as well. So they were, they ran the city by committees. But we, we'll utilize that with Ron to uh, uh, have those discussions. Uh, we're in a unique situation with this available funding to actually plan for capital needs. That's why we've been addressing so many, because we have such pent-up need. Because in the past, as things came up, the city addressed things as they could with the available funding and a lot of, a lot of cases they couldn't. So uh, we're in a better position. Some of the other things that came up, like signs, uh, garbage cans for the park, things like that, that's already included in, I say wrong wisely left. That's already included in Ron's maintenance budget, so those are things that are already on his list. Things in the park, we're not going to address until uh, uh, Fortag is done. Because there's going to be fenced, fencing down there that, currently down there that's going to be taken out and won't come back in some areas and some areas new fencing will come in. And so it doesn't make sense to put signs on and then have to take them down and put them back up again. Uh, and the garbage cans are going to move from where they currently are and we'll get something that's we'll get garbage cans that'll last more than a couple of years. So some of the things, some of the flexibility that we have, uh, that I didn't talk about, that I did a lot of time about, I was talking about staff. Is you see, we, we have a robust staff now that we haven't had before. And we have key people who were picked specifically for their expertise and their willingness to learn new things. And so going forward, we're having more flexibility within our budget, because we're going to stop relying so heavily on consultants and consultants are very expensive. And so the staff that we have that built here are getting cross-trained in a lot of areas so that we have redundancies when somebody goes out, they just don't have to wait for that person to come back. So they've been great and they're helping us wean off of our reliance on consultants, which is going to free up more money for other things that we can do. Um, and then one question, not question, clear direction. So there's been obviously a lot of discussion about traffic safety and traffic issues. And just going up and putting up speed feedback signs is fine, if that's what you guys want to do, but just doing it willy-nilly, um, the community's not here, a smattering of the community is here. And in my experience with these kinds of things, for every one person who really wants that, there's two or three people who will come and tell you why they need it. And those signs are bright at night and they flash and those are the people have in front of your houses, you see it. Um, and not everybody likes that. So you know, we need to hear from everybody before we just go start putting signs up. Um, and the signs are, I think now around eight thousand dollars a piece, nine thousand dollars a piece. And that was, that was four years ago, installation and, and then maintenance, they break down all the time. That we have to get them fixed. Um, so that's not an excuse not to do it. But then we've also had comments about people wanting speed bumps and people wanting other traffic calming measures. And so maybe, maybe what we do for this next fiscal year, uh, and with the Public Works Committee, is maybe get a traffic engineering consultant, somebody's an expert in steel to come and walk us through with the ins and outs of those kinds of things. And what works for a community outside of what doesn't work, how far apart you put those signs. So that at least when we do it, it's strategic and it's not just put one here.
Yeah, and I, I would just like to say that, that's the way I saw it, that we need to start that initial step, just like we are with uh, park and you know, potential economic development strategy. Um, and I think we did that when we initially put the ones in now, we, we got that traffic assessment. And they, they recommended certain spots and there were residents, after those recommended spots were, were laid out on the road, they said, we don't want that in our house, uh, you know, in our, near our yard, so we moved it. Um, so yeah, my, my thought process was the same, that we, we initiate that process of analyzing.
Because also, once Fortag goes in across, that's going to be a whole new thing for somebody to tell us what works there. Okay, great. Then that's what we'll find. I think that's the only clarification. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, Jared. Thank you.
All right, I, I think we're in good shape. I, I'll just close it with, are, are there any other? Yeah, I just wanted to, one more time, allow the, the, the council to make any additional comments or questions. So Vice Mayor Halleck, you're good? Councilmember Shirley?
Yeah, um, thank you. Uh, so Ann's comment about priorities again makes me think about strategic planning, which we have not done in years. We, we, we're a council that doesn't have priorities or goals set up, which is very unusual. We've had money in the budget to do strategic planning for several years and we have not done it. So it's hard to know what our priorities are if we, again, haven't sat down to discuss it. And I know we can talk about it in, in a little meeting, you know, finance meeting on a Friday at noon. But I, you know, I think we need to do it on a larger stage with more people, with more residents and get their, and get their input. I mean, for instance, you know, what if we, we were to say, you know, do we want a new dais? Or do we want to do the Adair stairs? Like maybe we need to prioritize, because I think we, you know, throughout the year, we, we do this budget, but the council doesn't have input on, on what actually gets done first, right? That's, that's up to staff. And I don't know if we want to provide more input on what things, the order that things get done. Um, because there's obviously, we do have limited staff. Um, but maybe there's things we really want to see before other things. And I think um, there's, you know, timing and things like that throughout the year that where we can say, hey, you know, we brought up new signage on certain streets and we're not seeing it. Or you know, I, I, I feel like we need an opportunity. So again, we've been sitting on that strategic planning money, we have never done it. So I'm gonna, I like to really advocate that we do that. And as a council, we establish some goals and priorities for this next year. Ideally, we would have done it before this budgeting session, but that's fine. I think if we do it at all, I think it, it would be important to do.
Okay, thank you. Um, Councilmember Berger, you're good?
Good.
Okay, Councilmember Uli?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to applaud John for your, for that idea, the focused study. So if we need a consultant and then we can also uh, uh, probably have it in our Public Works Committee meetings and so that we can get uh, input from, from the community, that's great. Yeah, so thank you.
Okay, and then I'll go out to the public one last time. Are there any remaining comments or questions that you might have? Okay, well, I really appreciate the discussion, not only from my fellow council members, but also from the public that, that took time to come here, I really appreciate it. We've, we've given the guidance that you need and now it's just a matter of, of going through and executing. So thank you all for coming, meeting is adjourned. Yeah. Yes, I will definitely let you know, absolutely.